We want to do a little example of how they did that. And they all worked out for the same good. So what I did, man, was it changed the previous. They did you wrong. I personally did it. They should just match.
We want to do a little example of how you're doing. I know some of you like that. The first thing is.
Well, they were twelve.
Just we'll have to interview them. Go by the.
Talk about like this. Thank you. We were powering off Saturday. And it was Tom Freeman and Garant. This guy comes up to us and said something about lighting. He was around right there. Logan Hill. He's from Chattahoochee. Been at camp out of Friday. As I said, it's not standard where he is. He's got. He's a light road, but he's mostly a bear to do. Having a light on the subject here.
Sometimes it takes a little bit for it to come on.
Oh, there we go. You never know where you're coming out.
I ain't got way to carry it. I'm also. Yeah, you tell me. Well. You tell me. I get in the car. I don't always do it like a.
How are you, Mr. Magin? I'm good.
Mr. Sears, how are you?
Oh, I'm fine.
Mr. DeBose.
You OK?
Gentlemen, hi, y'all. OK.
Well, he asked me to make sure I got it for me because he wasn't going to be here today. Because he had been looking for it. I couldn't find anything today.
You could. You should have the deeds. And you should have the closings. So what I can take, I can. I mean, there they all are, but I can put together enough passes for him. Because I found the file.
When is it from? What year?
Two thousand one.
Yeah.
See, we bought. What I guess, I'm not sure what he was thinking. But in other words, we bought these two pieces. Alexan. We gave them a life estate. But they're. Uh, house. And then we sold. And it looks like, and I'd have to go back. We may have sold. Uh, the board of education. Uh, this piece, which was by. This plan earlier. But then I think once they laid out what they were doing on the property, they would.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I can talk to you about.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Opioid stuff. I mean, I've registered. And then sends it back to me for me to sign. Even though I put Keith's name. I have to agree to sign it before I can read it. So I.
Throw a fire.
And they're two different ones. But it's coming from the same. Two different pools of money, but it's coming from the same administrator. I guess I just sign. So you agree to spend the money however they tell you to spend?
Yeah.
OK.
I got a time loan that I can put it on my own.
Yeah.
Unless I got a chance sometimes. Not always, I got a chance.
Well, you got to know it first.
Yeah, that's my cousin's children. Like that, my cousin's grandchildren, I guess. I don't really have anything. Some of them I can tell you, some of them. My two sisters.
Yeah.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in this city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decisions. In the name of Christ.
Amen.
This is the March twenty second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of March the eighth, twenty twenty-two. Before y'all entertain a motion, we adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Motion is second. We adopt those minutes as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening is report from boards and commissions. Uh, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, sir. I'd like to renominate Mr. Bob Coggan for the planning commission.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Ms. Jenkins, do you have the introduction of our views?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, we have with us in attendance tonight from the Noonan Youth Council. Um, and please stand when I call your name. Lauren Vandenhuevel, senior, Northgate. Leah Rhodes, senior, Heritage. Bill Moody, senior, Heritage. And Rachel Henson, senior, Heritage. Thanks for joining us.
Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything to say?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a quick moment to give council an update of where we stand on the closure of Noonan Crossing Boulevard East and our culvert collapse that we experienced last week. We quickly engaged a third-party engineering firm to come out, integrated science and engineering, to do an inspection and evaluation of the facility. The first thing we really wanted to try to determine is whether or not, number one, it's safe to keep the road open or reopen the road. And obviously, the quick recommendation of the findings of the engineer that we would, it was safer to actually close the road. The second thing we asked the engineer to do is to analyze what type of fix we may be looking at. And obviously, the first thing we really wanted to look at is see how feasible a temporary fix may be or a, lack of a better term, an easier fix. While we don't have the final written report evaluation from the engineer, we hope to have that sometime later this week. We do have confidence from the engineer with our communications that we will not be able to do the temporary fix. There's too many issues in the culvert itself. The drainage basin analyst pretty much said that the pipe that is there, which is already thirteen foot in diameter, is undersized. The undersized pipe is part of the reason as to why we were having issues. So it looks like we're going to have to be proceeding with a complete culvert replacement. The culvert that's in the ground is actually a metal pipe. On the bottom of the structure is rusted. One of the reasons why we no longer allow metal pipes under our roadways. But the replacement will obviously be a concrete culvert system. But unfortunately, it's a complicated removal. We've got about thirty-two foot of field that has to be removed. A lot of utilities. Every utility we have is in the roadway. Deconstruction of the roadway. So while I don't have a schedule yet as to how long the project is going to take, we're going to do everything we can to expedite it. We hope to have a preliminary schedule at some point in time. But I'm just going to be honest with you. It's not going to be tomorrow. It's not going to be next week. It's going to be a pretty, pretty lengthy closure just due to the size and the extremity of replacing the culvert. Number one priority, uh, safety of our traveling public. And number two, repair it right and repair it permanent so we don't face the issue again.
Any questions, Mr. Phillips regarding the issue?
No, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. OK, I don't have anything this evening. Uh, under new business, this is information only. This is a rezoning request. RZ twenty twenty-two oh-two by Melissa Griffiths on behalf of NRP Group for thirty-eight point seven acres. Sell it like parkway. Tax parcels oh eighty-six, oh five zero five three zero zero two oh eighty-six, five zero four four zero zero two. Zoning requests to change current zoning categories of residential multifamily, high density, and CCS and CGN to a mixed use. And this is for the construction of two hundred seventy-one apartments and propose six thousand square feet of commercial. This is a referral to the planning commission. As I said earlier, there's no action needed here. This is information only. The next item on the agenda is consideration for the contract award of watershed debris removal. Mr. Curry, how are you, sir?
Well, Mayor Brady, members of the council, as you may recall, um, in June of twenty twenty-one, the city of Noonan applied for funding under the, um, the NRCS program to remove certain vegetative debris from qualified waterways. That project, that application was awarded in November of the same year. Um, shortly thereafter, after the new year moving into twenty twenty-two, the city issued a request for proposals. We received five proposals from qualified firms. I think we have a slide up here that shows you in particular the location of those affected parcels. I'm here in front of you recommending that the city council engage Cohaba Disaster Recovery after review from staff. Not only they're also well-qualified people in this work. And I'm prepared to answer questions if you have it.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request of contract award on the watershed storm debris removal, uh, as recommended by staff. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a request by the owner to demolish a structure built more than fifty years ago. The address is one ninety-four Greenville Street, and this parcel is not located in a historic district. Mr. Stevenson, how are you this evening?
Good evening. I'm doing fine. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, good evening. Um, this property is located at one ninety-four Greenville Street. There's actually three structures on the property. There's a concrete building in the left rear. The main building is the old floor shop. You may remember it, and it's currently being used by Bigfoot for their, um, sales floor area. And then there's this house, this old house that's on there that owner has requested to tear it down. Uh, the owner has, uh, done the necessary procedures according to ordinance in regarding, um, doing the advertising and the posting of the sign. And the owner is here if you would like to speak to the owner.
And this is a public hearing on this issue.
This is a public hearing, yes, sir.
Public hearing for the demolition of property older than fifty years old. The address is one ninety-four Greenville Street. Council, have any questions regarding the issue? The owner is here. OK, seeing anyone else who would like to come forward to speak to the issue of the demolition of the property at one ninety-four Greenville Street? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the issue.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request to demolish the structure. Uh, the address is one ninety-four Greenville Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. We appreciate it very much. OK, uh, the next item on the agenda this evening under unfinished business, this is the validation or approval of the application for annexation twenty twenty-two dash oh-two by North nine, uh, three, three ninety LLC. This is for five point one nine acres on State Route twenty-nine. Tax parcels zero seven three C zero zero two, zero seven three C zero zero two A, zero seven three C zero zero three, zero seven three C zero zero four, and zero seven three C zero zero four A. The requested zoning is for commercial use, and this is for just passage on to the planning commission if we so desire.
This is a little different. Um, you all referred this to planning commission last month, but because this is a sixty percent method of annexation and not a one hundred percent method of annexation, we have a little different process you have to go through.
All right.
So the step in this one is, is that we have to validate that the application meets the requirements, and the council has to vote on that. Then we begin the sixty-day review process. So you'll have a little difference in that planning commission and the city council will consider it in the same month. We'll send certified letters out to the property owners. We'll do the signs like we usually do. We'll do the adjacent properties like we used to do. But we also have advertising requirements that are a little different. We have to advertise the first and, or the first two weeks prior to the hearings on both hearings, which we typically do fifteen days. But in this, it's the week before and the week prior to that, we have to advertise.
OK, so we're going the sixty percent method. I think it may be beneficial to understand what that is.
Right. So in case of the sixty percent method, as you can see, there are four tracks up there that are requested in annexation for. We have one of the individuals that is the most eastern track that does not want to come into the city. The other four want to come into the city. Um, so the way it works is that they can request annexation through the sixty percent method, which means sixty percent of the resident electors, which in this case there are no resident electors on those tracks, and sixty percent of the owners of the land area have to petition. And that's what they've done. So in this step here, we have to validate the application, which has been done by staff, and that has to be voted on in order for us to start the public hearing process.
And the reason why they're doing that is to not create an island.
That's correct. You cannot create an island by state law, and you would keep the others from coming in if you didn't have a method of being able to go out there and annex those tracks.
Right. OK.
You said the eastern piece did not want to do that. Which is the eastern piece?
It's the body shop there. Um, I think it's four eighty-four.
That's north.
The closest. Yeah, the northeast, sorry.
Number four eighty-four?
That's correct.
So, so again, this is a, this is a validation of the application.
That's correct.
Then you begin your process of sixty days, and then we go into, uh, the public notification process. Comes back before us, and then it comes back, and then it goes to the planning commission.
Well, then, what will happen is it's a sixty-day process from here out, so it would go before planning commission. I think it's April twelfth. It would go before you all the second meeting in April because we have to finish within a sixty-day limit. And then if you all decide to prove it, goes to a second reading. That has to be within that sixty days. So that's why we're moving through the process like we are.
Good. All right. Thank you. Mr. Alexander? Let me clarify this. So number, the lot four eighty-four does not want to come in, but if there's sixty percent or more who want to, is that what you're saying?
Sixty percent of the owners of the land area and sixty percent of what would be the resident electors. In this case, no one lives out there. There aren't any resident electors. And it meets the criteria for sixty percent of the landowners because the rest of the tracks want to come in.
What, but it's sixty, it's a minimum of sixty percent?
That's correct.
In this case, it's clearly more than sixty percent.
It is more than sixty percent. That's the minimum threshold, yes.
Under state law?
That's correct.
Any other questions, Ms. Donovan? Here's our motion to approve the validation.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or further questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. The next item on the agenda, in fact, several items are public hearings. The first one is a public hearing on one seventy Lagrange Street. This is a resolution to repair or demolish. Murray, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well. How are you, Mr. Mayor and council?
Good.
Just as a quick recap, we originally had seven properties that were going to be coming to public hearing tonight. Two of those have since dropped off. Uh, six Calhoun Street, uh, did have a demo contract, as you informed us in a earlier council meeting, and they did pull their demo permits, and that, that house was demolished in, uh, within the last few weeks. And then eight Alpine Drive was another one that was demolished by the owner. So that leaves us with the five current properties. Uh, I will kind of hit the highlights on these because I know we've got a lot of, uh, to cover. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them. There are representatives from at least a few of the properties here that I think will be able to add some insight as well. Um, one seventy Lagrange Street is owned by Mr. Robert Ambry. Uh, the, uh, the building is, of course, gotten a lot of attention and, uh, is in obviously bad shape. The, the cost to, uh, to repair would be greater than fifty percent of the assessed value. Mr. Ambry did, um, secure the property, hired a restoration company, uh, and secured the property and cleaned out the lot. It was his understanding they were going to clean out the contents of the building, and that didn't happen. And then I've had numerous conversations with him, and he says he knows that the building has to be demolished, but it hasn't happened yet. And just within the last couple of days, we did find out there's a contract purchase of property. And I think Mr. Barron is, is here representing the buyer. If you would like to, um, ask him some questions about the contract, but it is under contract with a closing date scheduled for May thirteenth at this point.
Right. Well, I have other questions about Mr. Ambry first. I mean, can you give us any, shed any light on why it's been a year and he has not done what he should have done for this community, which was demolish this building?
He, he has a lot of excuses. Uh, he uses COVID as excuse, contractor issues, uh, insurance issues. Uh, then he says he's on our side, and he knows it needs to come down. He has taught, he says he has gotten demolition bids, but he hasn't actually signed a contract for anybody to demolish the house or the apartment building. And he's just, I mean, my, my impression is he's just dragging his feet. He's, uh, I, I don't know if there's a financial reasons potentially, but he's not at this point moving forward. He keeps saying he is, but he's not.
Has he ever informed you as to whether or not he has collected from the insurance company?
It's my understanding that he has, that he has settled the issues he originally said he had with the insurance company.
And he told you that directly?
Yes.
OK. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brady and council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I brought a copy of the contract, uh, brought our buyer, Daniel Ligtie, uh, who is a great builder. I think he'll do a really nice job on this property. Uh, Daniel, in the contract says that he will have the building demolished at his expense, Daniel's expense. I think getting Daniel in the property is a good thing. I think he'll, uh, if you know some of his houses, he did a great job. I know a couple of lots over on Elm Street that were difficult. And, um, you know, Daniel can speak for himself on the time he needs, but my understanding is he would like to have till, is it June tenth, Daniel? Is that correct? Uh, he, the contract's May, May thirteenth, but then he will need time after that to get it demolished, and then he'll start, you know, building houses. But he's also wanting to go through a process, uh, you know, prior to closing of doing a survey and getting it divided into two lots if possible. So, uh, that's where we are. This just happened. Uh, I met with Dean Smith Monday, gave him a copy of the contract and told him what was going on. We had it under contract prior to that with another party that was going to do the same thing, but that didn't work out. But Daniel stepped in, and, and I feel very confident, uh, that Daniel will do a good job. So I guess that would be our request that, uh, Daniel might have till, um, you know, June tenth. Is that right, Daniel? I'm OK to demolish the property, and then he'll, he'll go forward with everything else.
Well, Mr. Ligtie, if you'll come forward, please, because I've, I've got, I don't know how anybody else feels, but at least I'm going to be able to vent how I feel about this. This, this has been, the owner of this property has done nothing but delay and delay and delay and make it. delay and make excuses to this city. And when he makes that excuse to this city government, he's also making that same excuse to all of those citizens who live on Lagrange Street and all of the other places in this city that were affected in a negative way by the storm that's coming up on a year anniversary. And many, many, many of those people have done the right thing, and have fixed their homes and/or demolished them to make their community look like they should look. And this gentleman has owned this property for, I don't know how long, but it was an investment property. He made money off of it. But when it came time to do the right thing for this community, he refused to do it. So I've got a real problem with going all the way until making the people of this city continue to suffer and see that every day. There are people who come up to me who walk Lagrange Street, who live in that area, and go, when can you get that thing torn down? And I have said to them, it's on our meeting agenda for March 27th, and we're going to do a demolition or repair that evening for a short period of time. June the 10th is not a short period of time. And Mr. Lickety, you and I know each other well, and I know your work, and you'll build two great houses there, I'm sure. Maybe I'll get outvoted here, but I don't want to go to June the 10th. What I want to do is adopt a repair, demolish for 30 days on that property, get this owner to tear it down, deliver the property to you with the building demolished. We've got other people after you tonight, and if I, if we sit here and say, well, we're going to give you till June the 10th, I don't know how we rightly can say to anybody else on this list, we're going to give you 30 days. I don't see how that works. I don't see how that's fair.
May I ask you a question? What is, what you're proposing, what's the probability of this owner of said property tearing it down in 30 days? So what happens if we give him 30 days to tear it down, and he does not? Then what happens?
We tear it down. We lean the property, and when it's closed to Mr. Lickety, he has to pay us back.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Sears?
That's up to Mr. Phillips. I don't know what the schedule would be, but that's the process. Now, whether the city could get it torn down shortly after 30 days, I can't.
So...
I'm just saying the city would be authorized to tear it down at the end of the period.
Is 30, is 30, 30 days, just for clarity's sake, is 30 days the minimum? So based on what we hear here, this guy dragging his feet forever in a day, and can you do it, can we do it to like 15 days, or is 30 days the minimum? That's what I want to know.
I don't think that 15 days gives Mr. Phillips enough time to...
Well, the thing that just dictates our schedule are two things. I mean, obviously, right now, for example, I got a lot of my crews out on the crossing Boulevard, so it's resourceful, that is one. And number two, the two steps that we do in demoing a house in this program is, number one, utility disconnects. Hopefully, in this particular case, the utilities have already been disconnected, but it still is a process for us to confirm that. We certainly don't want to put a demo equipment in, and the gas will still be connected. So anyway, but probably the thing that takes a little bit longer in this particular case is we will have to send in someone to do an asbestos abatement. I can't start demoing the home unless I know what materials are inside the home. So we don't do the abatement, so I'll have to rely on a third-party contractor to give me the abatement. If we get the abatement analyzed and it's clean, then I can proceed. If it's not, then I got to do the abatement process. So it's hard for me to sit here and tell you what that schedule would be after the 30 days, but it certainly would not be a day or two after.
Ms. Alexander? Yes, I have a question. Mr. Lickety, do you have someone scheduled to tear this down?
He's not tearing it down.
I have the resources to get it down.
Right. By, by June 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
Do it by June 10th.
But Mr. Lickety, why does it, why does it take, after you close on May the 13th, why does it take another 30 days to get it torn down?
Because I'm just concerned with supply and resources.
And if I will interject, because in this, this conversation has been, I mean, everybody is dealing with supply chain issues, dealing with manpower. There's, you know, as Mr. Phillips said, there's a process to go through, especially with a building that size and materials and all that. I mean, I get it that people are upset, that people have had houses that are, and buildings that have been sitting for a year, but a lot of those cases, and I'm not saying this one, but I'm just saying I don't want this to be indicative of what's happening in our community. I mean, we've got real issues as to why people can't get this done. So, and insurance is one of the biggest ones we keep hearing. So, you know, I would rather, instead of trying to be angry with this guy and trying to force a schedule that is not what we have in front of us, we have 45 days, not 30, and try to work with the people who are coming here saying they're going to do something within a reasonable amount of time. I mean, I am in favor of giving him till June, whatever it is you just said, to get this done. A few more weeks after a year and all the stuff that we've been through to get a good product at the end, I think is reasonable.
One thing that interests me is the fact that he was going to tear it down and build two houses, is my understanding, which is much more attractive for that neighborhood. So I feel like the, if, I know Daniel, I know what he does, and I know he'll take care of things. So I feel like if we give him to that June date he says, and then it doesn't happen, then we will just automatically go for it.
This is not about Mr. Lickety.
I understand.
This is about...
The piece of property.
The piece of property and the owner who has done nothing but deceive us from...
I just want to get it done.
...all the times he told us he would do it.
But I'm not him.
Right.
So I have a question. It'd be held against me.
But I think we have a, we have a clear plan right here. He's willing to buy it. I can't see throwing a cog in this thing and just let the sale go through.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question first, and I appreciate that you want to put something good in there and get rid of it, but right now, it is an eyesore, and I know the current owner's not here. Mr. Murray, is this building, is this facility secured?
Yeah, it is from the ground level. The top is, of course, wide open, and the contents are still there.
So part of the, part of it is, you know, looks like it's accessible from ground level. And I know somebody from, somebody wanted to speak on that behalf, that's a resident, you know, nearby. I just want to make sure it's actually secure and that it's not becoming a hazard, you know, safe to, safe to your health.
It is, and that was what the company you hired to do, was supposed to do. And I haven't checked each door to see if you can get in, but it's my understanding that it has been secured.
And Mr. Crickaway is correct. We have a Ms. Compton here who has wanted to speak to this issue. If you'll come forward at this time, we're still in this public hearing. How are you this evening? If you'll state your name for the record.
Alita Compton, and I live at 174 Lagrange Street. So I'm actually here because of two properties. The apartment complex is on one side, and 176 is on the other. And I'm continuously having to pick up trash. Debris comes blowing across from this building and the house. The building is not secure. You see that stairwell there with the white door on the back? You can go down there right now, and that door is open. And I have visibly seen people on that stairwell. Couple of kids, smoking. So it's not secure. And there's continuous traffic, sightseeing, people just, I share the driveway. I have an easement. So people are always driving back there to look around, dump trash, whatever. Same with the house next door, 176. There's actually been a robbery there. Somebody broke into the vehicle that was left there. So I don't sit at my windows and watch everything. That's just what I've noticed, coming and going. And I hope he does get it and tear it down. At least somebody's doing something, because you're right, he's sat on it for a year. And the same with the house. I mean, until last month, nobody had done anything with it, and I'm sure it was insurance. I had trouble with insurance. But I think, you know, it's been a year, enough is enough.
May I ask her a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
Based upon our conversation, how do you feel with the timeframe moving into June, as opposed to a 30 days, what's being discussed?
If he will secure the building, I have no problem.
So you would be good as one who's right there, left and right?
I'm like Ms. Jenkins. If somebody's willing to do it, nothing moves fast when it comes to construction and insurance. I don't have a problem waiting. I just want somebody to make sure the building is secure, because it's not my property. I have no say-so. But it bleeds over. You know, I'm right there.
Yeah.
So as long as he can secure it, tape off the back, something, that'd be great.
Well, I don't, but I don't think it's Mr. Lickety's place to go on a property that he doesn't own and secure it.
Once he closes, what did you say, May?
April.
Once he closes, he can secure it, right?
Sure.
I mean, I wish it would be quicker, but, you know, I don't want to endanger this happening either, because it just takes, everything takes time. Unless, even for you to tear it down, it's going to take time.
That's right. Anyone else? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much.
So I have a question. Do we have a means or a mechanism in order to ensure that that building is secured, even the second floor, prior to the ownership change and getting it secured that way, just to make sure that there isn't a hazard going on with that?
The city, the city can step in and secure it if the owner's not going to do it. That's my understanding.
And it sounds like he's rather non-responsive when it comes to this.
Yeah, he has been, yes.
That's for sure.
Is there something we can do, Mr. Phillips?
Oh, absolutely. We, as Mr. Murray said, we have secured properties in the past. Obviously, you know, our time and materials, you know, we're going to lean it as well. Of course, obviously, time and materials for security property are very, very minor compared to demolition costs. So yes, we can certainly do that. You know, one thing that you may want to recommend here, and I certainly agree, but obviously, or at least have a discussion, in the case the contract falls through, are we back here having another hearing?
No.
Or are we going to just go all the way to that date? Or is this timeframe contingent upon closing? So what if we get to May 13th and it doesn't close? We get notification that it doesn't close? Do we come back and restart a calendar, or can we shorten the, can we have a contingent revocation?
My suggestion was going to be that, what was the date, Mr. Lickety, again?
June 10th.
No.
June 10th.
June 10th. My suggestion to council was to adopt a resolution for repair, demolish only before June 10th, 2022. That way, it's done. When I come back, it's not contingent on anything. He doesn't close, we still, if he doesn't close May 13th, we know, or whatever it extends to. I mean, June 10th is your date to start demolition. And I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, unless anybody else has anything to say about 170. Okay, I'm going to close, Mr. Sears.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make, if we could put days in there, because our standard-form resolution doesn't have drop-dead dates. It has, we give certain days. Otherwise, I'll have to redo the front page of the...
We'll talk slowly while someone counts.
Forty, well, that's 41, Drew.
How many days that is?
Forty-one, then April's got, so that's 71, and then we're on the, we're on the 20, 22nd. So there's nine more, that's 80 days. Is that right?
Tomorrow's day one. Nine days in March, 30 in April, 31 in May, 31 in May.
So while he's actually calculating, Mr. Mayor, since that we closed that public hearing, could we address potentially 176 and just make sure that building is secured as well?
Eighty days. Eighty days is the 10th.
Eighty days.
Okay, so it's an 80-day repair, demolish. Is there a motion for an 80-day repair?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. The next, the next property is another public hearing, 176 Lagrange Street. This is a resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir. This property is owned by Ms. Myrtle Lord. I did speak with Ms. Lord shortly after the first year. She has left the state. She's moved to Minnesota, and her intention was to repair the property and then sell it. And it didn't sound like she had an intention of coming back. The property's set for a long time, nothing was done. Megan, could you scroll down? There's some other pictures, do you have?
Oh, no.
Oh, that's all it shows, okay. Well, the, the closest house, the closest side of the house that you're seeing was basically wide open. The roof was gone. That has all been repaired and framed up, a new roof, but then it's been sitting again. I did speak with the contractor, Jaco Contracting. I don't know if Tyler's here tonight. He was going to try to come. But they, he told me they encountered some issues with, he said asbestos, but he was, Ms. Lord was supposed to be in town last week, and they were going to discuss some issues with the property before they can move forward. He did not give me a timeframe on what he was looking at. So it's basically stalled again, so.
Right. And could be stalled, stalled for however long. Okay?
She's not here, and I don't...
Is anyone else here that wants to speak to the issue of 176? Ms. Compton, would you, you want to come back up? Or, you're welcome to do that or not. Either, it's your pleasure.
Alita Compton. Until last month, as soon as, we talked quite a bit, the renter and I, and they had the same issue I had, insurance issues. And they came and they worked on it maybe one or two days, and then it stopped until last month. And like, like you said, they repaired the roof, and, but nobody ever cleaned it up. When the tarp failed, it rained, and rained, and rained on that house. So I imagine the inside is pretty much demolished. And that's probably what happened, that there's probably mold issues, asbestos, who knows? I never went inside the house after the tornado, so I don't know. But it's been the same thing, insurance on that one. And there's been a robbery there, and you can see the place. They didn't clean up outside at all. And not all of that is construction debris. That is just plain old trash.
I run by there a lot. I see it.
Yeah.
I get it.
And it all comes to me. I constantly, anytime the wind blows, I go outside and pick up trash. So...
Okay, is there anyone else here that wants to speak to the issue?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Of 176 Lagrange Street. We'll close, close the public hearing at this time and recommend a 45-day repair, demolish.
I make the motion, did he?
Is there a second? Second. Motion is second. We adopt a 45-day repair, demolish on 176 Lagrange Street. Any other discussion or questions?
Okay, so we're not looking at what staff recommended of 90 days? We're shortening it to half?
I see no reason to subject the people who live there for an extra 45 days after a year. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Nay.
Motion carried. The next is 178 Lagrange Street. This is a public hearing on 178 Lagrange Street. Yes, ma'am. If you'll come, Mr. Murray will give his report first.
Yes, this is a house, again, next door to 176. The house was, the owner of the house, Ms. Beachboard, is deceased. A family member was living in the house for a period of time, but, but left, and was, the house was vacant prior to the storm. The, I did speak with one of the heirs, Ms. Duro, a daughter of Ms. Beachboard. They have indicated a desire to sell the property, and there is, my understanding, a contract on the, to purchase the property. One issue is there's still a small loan with Bank of America, which, which has been an issue. Uh, the, the family hired Mike Sumner to probate the will, and I think he was supposed to be here tonight. Um, but, uh, he is working through some of the legal issues, and then, uh, it's my understanding that the, the property will sell and the new owner, uh, has intent to repair the property.
Okay. Uh, so who would like, who's coming forward to speak?
Me.
Okay.
I'm the, I'm the daughter.
All right, if you'll identify yourself with the.
I'm Debbie Dura, or Deborah Dura.
How are you today?
Nervous.
That's okay. I didn't get nervous.
That was my mother's house. We, she bought it from Ms. Hammond, um, back in the eighties, and we had daycare there. My brother Jay, when she passed, my brother Jay and my sister-in-law Cindy lived there up until about four years ago. They vacated it, and they said, I want you to sell it. So I started the procedures. Well, then they kept living in there and out, in and out. To be honest, I tried calling Bank of America, they gave me the runaround. I said, I need to know something. They didn't give me nothing, so I tried calling just before I came here, and they said, oh, I'm sorry, we're closed. Today is Tuesday. Thursday, I went to the Bank of, of America on Bull's Row. I sent them mother's death certificate, I had her social security card, her, uh, driver's license and her debit card. She is, she is passed. Everything that I know i- is, is closed, you know what I'm saying? Mr. Alan Davis is wanting to buy the house. I'm not trying to drag my feet, by no means I want it to go, you know what I'm saying? And I know that it's right beside Noonan High School. I can't go there because I graduated there. I have really good, good memories there. I know this storm is, I can't even imagine, it's like cancer to me, you know what I'm saying? And I understand where you guys are coming from. I'm trying, I'm trying. It's that weight that, that's on me, and it's like, come on, get off. Uh, they're wanting something, and I want to, I want to prove to you that I can do it, but with them, the bank not giving me what I want, I don't know what else I can do.
The, um, the close date on the contract that you have, do you recall what that is?
No, sir, no, sir. All I know is Alan and I are working, you know, to try to get it. We're trying, I'm trying to put it in probate and stuff. I got to, I need the bank to answer my, my questions and stuff. They're not wanting to answer me, and I don't, I don't know what more I can do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Seager?
Yes, um, Mr. Chris Redding with a law firm in Atlanta represents Bank of America. Bank of America has said that they, you know, whatever counsel decides is up to counsel. Uh, I was told that the balance on the loan is five thousand dollars. Uh, this was a, um, uh, equity line that was put on a number of years ago. Now, I don't know if, if, uh, the sibling that was living there was making payments and then quit or whatever, but, uh, the lawyer indicated to me he had talked to Mr. Sumner, and the bank would be willing to work with them, uh, with regard to the loan. So he.
Well, I mean, wouldn't the bank get paid off when the house closes? I mean, that's normally the way.
Well, it, my understanding, my understanding, the contract is for only ten thousand dollars? Is that?
Mm-hmm.
The contract's only ten thousand dollars, so there's, you know, he was not, um, sure that, with the probate costs and everything else on the contract, how it would work. So to the extent that you've got costs that are coming out, uh, but he said the bank would be willing to work with them. And so, now, to that, that would not be between the city and the bank, that'd be between Mr. Sumner, uh, and the estate and the bank. But the, to answer your question, there is enough money, obviously, that would be available, assuming that the probate costs don't run too much, so.
Okay, well, not knowing the closing date on the contract is problematic.
Well, I think that the, the big problem is nailing down what date, and that's why I thought Mr. Sumner might be here, that he could expect the will to be probated. It's my understanding that in order to get the other heir's signature and all with the, or what I've been told, with the way the will was set up, that the minute that the letters, testimony are issued, uh, then, uh, Ms. Duro, is it Duro?
Yes.
Uh, would be able to go ahead and close on the property. So now, you know, you understand that.
Um, could I make a suggestion here that, uh, if I could get a motion from counsel to continue this public hearing until our April the twelfth meeting, so we can get an answer from Mr. Sumner?
So moved.
Without. I have a question that goes along with that. At the point in time it sells, what then?
Well.
He buys it, but is, is, is he prepared to do all the repairs or tear it down, or what is the process?
Um, I, I believe so. I, I don't know what his intentions are, but yes, sir. I buy, you know?
Well, that's the reason I want to know the closing date, so that we can do the same thing we did and be fair across the board with one seventy, who had the same similar issues, a contract on the property.
He just blew me away with saying all what he just said, I'm sorry.
Right.
But get, but get your buyer to get off, or if we extend it to.
We would need the buyer here that day to also.
Okay, I will make sure.
Okay. So I had a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, we continue the public hearing on one seventy-eight La Grange Street until, uh, April the twelfth, I believe is the date.
That's correct.
For our next meeting, twenty twenty-two. Is the motion, is there's, there's a motion is second, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another public hearing, twenty-nine Penson Street, resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir, this, uh, this property, uh, another, obviously, storm damaged property, um, uh, the cost to, uh, repair, it's our estimation would exceed assessed value of the property. Um, it's owned by Roy and Matan Investments. Uh, this property, again, set, we didn't hear from anybody. Um, we, we sent out the, the letters, and we did hear back from, finally, from the contractor who, uh, pulled, uh, pulled the permits. And. Permits were pulled in, uh, early, well, the first of, first of this month, and there have been a little bit of work done, but very little. They did a little interior demo. Um, they were there last week for a couple of days, but haven't seen them back since, and so basically, the house still sits. Now, their intention, and what they tell me, is they're going to repair it. They've submitted their permits and their plans, everything's been approved through the building department, uh, we're just waiting for the work to start, so.
Is there anyone here that would, uh, that would like to speak to the issue of twenty-nine Penson Street? Anyone, twenty-nine Penson Street? I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and suggest that the best thing we can do here is adopt the same forty-five-day resolution to repair, demolish, have that contractor come in and provide our building department like we normally do with a schedule that he can meet or not meet, and at the end of the forty-five days, if they've been diligent in their work, extend it.
Um, without that schedule, I mean, in the past, what we've, we've done a couple of things, we have done that, where we adopted a, a resolution, but we've also done what we just did, which is table it and have them come back in and tell us so we can adopt whatever that schedule is and hold them to thirty-day report.
But he can come in on that forty-five days, sure, and, and then we can extend it.
Provide him.
But if he doesn't come in, no, it's, I mean, he's got to pay attention. Other people came in, this is different, nobody's come in on this one.
Nobody's here to speak. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, forty, we adopt a forty-five-day repair, demolish, a resolution on twenty-nine Penson Street.
Something else to keep in mind is, this does look like an image, it is owned by an investing, investment group, it's not actually owner occupied.
That's right. Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign?
Nay.
Motion carried. The next is a public hearing on seventy Robinson Street. This is a resolution to repair and demolish. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir, another, uh, um, storm damaged property. Uh, again, we have, actually still have not heard, uh, from the owner, um, about, uh, what their plans are for the property. Now, he did, the owner is a, is a Pablo Falesquez Aguilara. Um, he lives in Alpharetta, according to the tax records, and, um, it's our understa- he did pull a demo permit about two weeks ago. The walls that you see standing out have been knocked down, uh, but the, the picture on the bottom is basically the foundation that's left, and then there's large debris piles still left on the lot, and, uh, that need to be removed. Uh, so the, the walls have come down, but the, the lot is still not cleared.
How long ago did they pull that demo permit?
Uh, got it right here. On, uh, March the eighth.
So just a couple of weeks ago, they pulled the permit, and then they went out and tore stuff down and haven't.
And left it, basically.
In just a couple of weeks, moved it yet.
Right.
It would seem as though that once you mobilize on a property to demo it, it's very expensive to have to come back and mobilize again, and mobilize again, and mobilize again. Is anyone here that would like to speak to the issue of seventy Robinson Street? This is a public hearing on this issue. Yes, sir, if you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Brady, and to the councilman. I'm Maurice Buchanan. I live at six twenty White Oak Drive, and, uh, even though I'm sixty-nine, I'm pretty nervous right now. And so I appreciate the prayer, beginning this, uh, meeting and with the Lord's blessing, uh, this proceeding is blessed. I had gotten information that this address had been, and it may be incorrect, and you can correct me, and then I'll go sit out.
It is.
That, uh, it was a historic black theater at some point?
Actually, it's next door.
It's next door, it's not this address?
Next door, it's not this one, nope.
Okay.
That was a miscommunication.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that clarification.
You're welcome.
My information was incorrect, but, uh, we're just sensitive to anything of, uh, black historical value within our great community, that, uh, we take some time to consider that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate you being here, thank you. Okay, so, um, if there's no one else coming forward on seventy Robinson Street, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and ask for a forty-five-day.
I make a motion. Forty-five days.
Okay. Motion is second, is there a second?
Second.